Good evening, welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting. As I just mentioned to the other two commissioners, I'm going to try to move this along as swiftly as we can. We might not be able to, but we could have some bad weather here a little bit. Be nice to get home with our loved ones if we can. Anyway.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, before I make a motion or do anything, I have a little announcement to make.
Okay.
Before I approve the minutes. But I am resigning my position as District One County Commissioner. I've got myself put on the public comments, so I'm hoping to make a statement in the public comments section regarding my resignation, but.
Say it now if you like, but you can wait in public comments. It's up to you.
I'll wait for public comments.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so.
Well, sorry to hear that, but I understand.
Well, actually, if no one has a problem, I'll go ahead and say it now.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
I understand what you're doing, and I appreciate what you're doing, so.
I am speaking here tonight to announce my run for Sheriff of Bourbon County. Many politicians and activists throughout the years have used language such as "America is under attack" or "A crisis is coming." We must act now in this pivotal moment, or we will lose our freedoms, lose our way of life. Those that say we are under attack are correct in a sense, but the situation is more like we are sick. We have an infection. We've been spoon-fed a slow-acting poison. We are like frogs being boiled in water while arguing amongst ourselves if the temperature is rising. I believe the majority of people in this county still hold to our nation's founding Christian values. I also think the water is getting very hot. I ask myself, how did we get here? Do most of us believe that we should be giving debit cards full of taxpayer money to people actively engaged in criminal lifestyles? Do we believe if someone is convicted of theft, burglary, or selling drugs, they should be released back into our community with no consequences to continue to drain our resources and to harass those of us who work for a living? Do we believe that the state or federal government should be able to force us to wear masks or get vaccinated with an experimental drug, or stop going to church? Do we believe our Second Amendment right to bear arms is outdated and should be done away with? Do we believe we, as a nation, are obligated to let swarms of people flood across our border and into our communities and demand we take care of them? Do we believe that men should be in women's bathrooms or play on women's sports teams? Do we believe tearing a baby apart inside the womb is healthcare and constitutionally guaranteed? Do we believe we shouldn't be able to pray in the name of Jesus without fear of getting sued? If we don't believe it, why is it happening? It is happening because we have, over time, made thousands of compromises. Law enforcement has been heavily affected by these compromises, these concessions to insanity. Too much of our attention is focused on catering to the threat of opinions from liberal court systems who say the culture is changing and we need to change with it. Too much time is spent memorizing dozens of made-up terms taught to us in state mandated trainings that tell us we're all racist. Too much time is spent trying to appease the whining and false accusations made against us by a tiny minority of criminals who have been caught. The same people are tax dollar support while they steal from us and use or sell drugs. The political climate created by liberal politicians, courts, and those who think burning down cities is an acceptable means of protest has discouraged law enforcement from enforcing basic laws that are put in place to protect life and property. There is a mindset growing within law enforcement to keep a low profile, keep updating department policies to further clip the wings of any officers that have a genuine desire to fight crime. A mindset of "It's just a job," or "All that matters is I go home at the end of the shift." All of this is done in an effort to appease the left. They will never be appeased. It's time to stop trying. It's time to start working for law-abiding citizens, not criminals and those who enable them. This is Bourbon County, Kansas, not California. Let's keep it that way. As Sheriff of Bourbon County, I would work to defend Bourbon County against what I view as its two biggest threats that law enforcement has an obligation to fight. The first being the criminal element of society that operates within the county, and the second being the increasingly insane leftist ideology which pushes tyrannical and unconstitutional laws and policies that are against our beliefs and values. An ideology, indeed, with the very purpose of snuffing out our culture. As Sheriff, I would encourage my deputies to treat a theft report with as much determination to see it solved as if they had been the ones stolen from. I would encourage them to relentlessly pursue criminals within the confines of the Fourth Amendment and not how some liberal judge on the other side of the country would have them. I would encourage them to prioritize physical fitness and professionalism so they will gain the respect of the citizens they serve and the fear of the criminal class. I would encourage them to remember that being a sheriff's deputy is more than a job, it is a calling, it is an amazing privilege. I would work to conserve taxpayer money in any way I could while still effectively running the office. My goal is to reduce money spent on overtime by personally working patrol or jail shifts and encouraging other salaried personnel to do the same. I have shown during my time as Commissioner that I have respect for taxpayer dollars. I am firm in my conservative beliefs, and I will not back down from what I believe is right when faced with opposition. I am asking for the public's vote for Sheriff on August 5th, 2024.
Thank you, Nelson.
Thanks, Nelson.
You're welcome. And you two, have fun.
Thank you, and good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you for everything you've done for us. You'll make a great sheriff.
I appreciate it.
So, I believe that, so.
You guys have a pleasant evening.
Thanks, Nelson. Good luck.
Thank you, Nelson. Okay.
Well.
Public comments.
Uh, I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Oh. I second it. We didn't get that done, did we? Okay, I got a second. Any of you got a motion to second any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Okay.
Now, public comments.
Thank you. Nelson, and then, Mary.
Mary Pemberton.
Good evening.
Good evening. This kind of feels like deja vu, don't you think? You guys are again using many of the same old excuses for solar projects as Commissioners did four years ago with the Jayhawk Wind Project. Things such as "Because we're not zoned, we can't do anything about it. All we can do is sign the contracts. They don't have to come ask our permission. They don't have to give us a pilot at all, so we should be grateful they gave us anything." These are all inaccurate statements made due to a lack of knowledge. Commissioners do play a vital role, and that is to protect all county residents, but especially the nearby non-participating landowners. You do this by the four different agreements that you sign. Among other things, protecting residents means requiring reasonable setbacks, reasonable pilot payments, designated road routes for all vehicles and maintenance on those roads, and decommissioning security that covers the full project term. All of these things, all of these things are not done in the agreements you signed with Apex. For example, 25-foot setbacks that you allowed, that is 10 feet or so less than the length of this room. I don't think anybody probably thinks that's reasonable. It does matter what your contracts say. Oftentimes, landowner contracts state that the county provisions supersede their contract provisions. As you know, landowners sign their contracts a long time before you sign yours, sometimes several years before. So they're trusting that you are also putting things in your contracts that will protect them. Zoning is helpful, but it's not necessary. Back when the Wind Project became public knowledge, I compared and analyzed contracts from several counties in the eastern half of Kansas that its projects starting after 2016, when the new Kansas law on tax exemption went into effect. I found only one common denominator between good and poor contracts, and it was not zoning. The one thing that made a difference was the people involved. Counties that took your approach and had their county counselor negotiate for them resulted in contracts that were drastically less favorable than those counties that hired an attorney who was experienced in these contracts and negotiations. In other words, someone who understands the process, knows what's typical and reasonable, who knows what the county can and can't do according to law, and who's not afraid to call their bluff during negotiations if necessary. I do my own research before I speak publicly, and I know you don't believe what I say. Even so, I suggest you do your own research, don't rely on what anyone else tells you. That includes Justin, Rob, or anybody else who is not showing you proof to back up their statements. Ask Labet County, which is not zoned, other than their large city parsons and their industrial park, much like Bourbon County.
Excuse me. Will you avoid using names for identified personnel, please?
I retract the name.
Okay.
In 2022, when they became, when Labet County became aware that Big Wind had started leasing ground, they did something that in effect placed a moratorium while they worked to determine what reasonable provisions were and to explore their options, including possibility of zoning. They took a very simple approach. They stated publicly that they would refuse to sign any road use agreement until they had had time to learn more. Labet County was not sued by the wind company. There wasn't even a threat or a big uproar. And that's because developers know that there's plenty of other locations, and honestly, these companies aren't turned off by zoning. Most places in the country are zoned, and they deal with it daily. It gives them predetermined guidelines to follow, thereby reducing the time needed for negotiations and public hearings. And yes, most other counties, zoned or not, actually hold public hearings where they can provide facts rather than rumors, gauge public opinion, discuss provisions, answer questions, and even Commissioners can learn a few things. Developers find these meetings a useful tool to help inform and reduce citizens' anxiety towards a project, and I'm taking that from a study. I didn't just make it up. Many areas from across the country are allowing alternative energy, but keeping it from entirely overtaking the county by implementing restrictions on the total number of acres allowed to be consumed by solar. In my opinion, that's a great way to allow some alternative energy projects, but not to allow them to run amok, as we are currently seeing happen in Bourbon County. The number of acres usually allowed depends on the population. More populated areas allow less, and less populated allow more. Usually, rural counties, it's calculated as a percentage of land area, typically 1%. It seems to be a very reasonable win-win solution, and so I recommend this is something that you guys strongly consider implementing as soon as possible. The federal government recently allocated billions of dollars more in subsidies, so solar developers all across the U.S. are rushing to get those credits. Bourbon County currently has at least four projects that I know of signing up landowners. I've heard rumor of a fifth, but I have not yet seen firm proof of that. I would say it's safe to say that there's still more on their way. The only area in the western half not covered by developers is where the Pike Reservoir is plotted to be. To everyone listening, you may think the issues of solar or lake don't matter or don't affect you because it isn't in your neighborhood, but it does matter, because not yet doesn't mean never. Right now, it's solar and a lake, but a year from now, it could be something else. And these issues do affect, do affect the taxes of every resident, whether you're in a project area or not. Let's not wait and find ourselves in the same boat as those citizens in a hidden valley area who didn't know there was a Pike Reservoir until the bill to create it was introduced in the Kansas Senate. Or like citizens near the Hinton Creek Solar Project who didn't know it was coming until after the Commissioners signed agreements. The time for action is now, before Commissioners have presented another set of solar development contracts. It would be great if our county government would hold informational public meetings, but since they don't, a small group of concerned citizens is taking on this task. I urge everyone to attend the meeting being held this Wednesday at 6:30 at the Livestock Sail Barn. The issue is too complicated and multifaceted for just one meeting, so I would say that this is likely just the first of several meetings that'll be held. It's an opportunity to start your learning process, ask questions or express your views, get some of your questions answered, or even get involved. This isn't just about being for or against wind or solar, it's about gaining knowledge, figuring out what is best for Bourbon County's future, and keeping citizens aware of what's happening before the deal is done rather than after. As has been said many times and more eloquently by many other people, government transparency and an informed public are necessary for happy citizens. And real quick, before I leave, I want to back up statements that I made a few months ago. I came here a couple of weeks after you signed the Hinton Creek Solar Projects, or the agreements, and asked about the low pilot payments. I suggested $3,200 per megawatt was a fair amount, based on research I had done with wind, and Clifton, you told me that you didn't believe anything that I was saying. I recently came across a study that was released just in January by Berkeley Labs, which is an arm of the Department of Energy, shows payments made to host communities for both solar and wind. They show the median payment for wind is $3,400 a megawatt, which is very close to the figure that I had given you. The solar agreements that you signed, which you said were negotiated by the county counselor and Rob Harrington, gave $900 per megawatt. The study shows median payments for solar is $4,900 per megawatt. And I'll repeat that, because you probably think I misspoke. You guys accepted $900. The median is $4,900. So, I will provide you the proof of that, and I think Bourbon County deserves better. I hope you all do, too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Lynn County, just, just so everybody knows, Lynn County's megawatt was half, was proposed half of what we were supposed to get, so.
Doesn't matter where you started, now it's where you get it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your effort.
I don't trust your research.
Thank you.
No, it's not my research, it's Berkeley's.
You're the one that researched it, I don't trust it.
Okay. Anybody else, public comment?
Nope, that's it.
That's it for public comments? Thank you, Mary. Uh, public works. Hi, Eric.
Good evening.
Oh, got the handyman with his equalizer. Good evening, gentlemen.
First thing I have is our culvert requests, our approvals for the month. There are two, one, two, three, four of them on there.
Always a pleasure to see you, gentlemen.
You've been missing me.
Been missing me?
Something like that.
Yeah, I'm sure I have been.
You should see and email, if you haven't already, our fuel prices for the month, so if you have any questions, give me a holler. Do want to let you know what happened here. There we go. Bridge replacement at 160th and Fern, going very well. The old bridge is completely out, and they were, as of Friday, getting things measured out, getting ready to start getting some concrete going on that, so. All in all, they are moving forward. I don't know what this little bit of rain's going to do to them. We may be on a delay, but anyhow, that project is moving forward. The Blackberry Project, just so everyone's on the same page, they will start April 30th, bringing in the poles for those power lines to replace the old poles that are out there. Weather permitting, we're planning on doing a blast at Blake Quarry Thursday. May get moved back to Friday. They're having some technical difficulties with the drill, so, but hopefully by the end of the week, we'll have a blast done at Blake Quarry.
Did you decide on a double or a single?
We went single to start off with.
Yeah.
That way, they felt we'd get a better, better blast going single, so.
Okay.
That's route we went.
Run their line chips.
Yeah. So, there is plenty cleared off, plenty overburden cleared to do at least one more and probably two more blasts there, so.
Good.
Something we're getting ready to start this week, we was going to start today, but Mother Nature had other plans for us, and that's our crack sealing program. We did get the crack sealer fired up today, got the, got it going. We're probably won't be able to go tomorrow due to the rain tonight, so, but hopefully by the latter part of this week, we're going to get started crack sealing. We're going to start out around shop, just close there, so that way, in case we have some technical difficulties, we're close by to, to correct things, and then we'll look at moving, moving further out. So, we plan on dedicating April and part of May on doing, doing our crack sealing.
Make a big difference.
Yes, it will. We're able to burn out at Elm Creek Lake last week. Weather cooperated very well, we got a good burn. Got rid of a lot of brush and grass and debris that was out there, so.
Something that we might look at, Eric, during budgeting process, is we probably need to start working on those buildings a little bit, probably out there.
Yeah.
I know we had some money in there and it went somewhere, but just something for discussion.
Okay.
Next June, or May, whenever we start, so.
Okay.
Okay.
They don't crave me. Yeah. Actually, I had somebody look at that.
I would like to, if you're getting ready to do the road deal, I have to leave at 6 o'clock. I would rather do that next week.
Okay. Oh, the road deal?
Unless it takes two minutes, I'd rather do it next week.
I was just going to hand them out tonight for you guys to review. That's all.
Okay, just to review?
Yeah, just to review. One more thing, we are, while he's handing them out, just to let you know, we are using our bucket truck. We're out and about cutting little hanging limbs, trying to help get equipment down the road, so.
Okay. I'm interrupting. Since you're leaving, I'm going to pull a suit. We need to pull a suit off. Let these gentlemen talk that's here, if possible. What do you think?
Yeah, that's fine, but I mean, I'm going to be out of here in 10 minutes.
Are you with SCK?
Yeah.
Can you do it 10 minutes or so?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Just leave them, Jennifer, get them from her.
Just make a motion to move CCAP request for funding to next.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Anything else?
Yeah, no. Only thing on those, just so, this first page is what we're proposing.
Okay.
If you want to look, look them over, and then if we can actually discuss it, the 15th.
Okay.
Would be awesome.
15th, good, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Hate to rush you.
Yep, no problem.
All in favor of that motion? Aye. Okay. SCK, you're up the floor, cheer, please. Terry, you're the EMS grant, right? Okay. Yes, sit down, sit down. You're approaching.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Have a seat, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I've got plenty of extras, if somebody.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us present before you tonight. My name is Scott Christensen. I'm the Director of Transportation at CCAP. We're in Gerard, Kansas. We do public transportation in the city of Pittsburgh. We do it in Crawford County, New Osho County, Cherokee County, Labet County, and since August 28th, we've done it in Bourbon County.
August 28th.
And the packet I gave you this evening is a little bit of overview about where we started and where we are.
Okay.
We were approached by the L-Heat to see about providing transportation. We had a couple of meetings at the Housing Authority, and they were, they were all positive response.
Good.
We have many citizens in Bourbon County who only have one vehicle, or have mobility issues, or elderly, disabled, that kind of thing. So, what we do is we provide general public transportation to any citizen in Bourbon County. And they, they call our dispatch number up to seven days in advance, and they can request a ride. Basically, I'll say any ride for any reason, but we do have policies and procedures we have to follow. We can't go into Missouri, we don't haul pets, sick animals, that kind of thing. But for the most part, if you're going to the grocery store, if you're going to the doctor, if you're going, you know, just do your grocery shopping, we can, we can get you there. We received, this is a flyer you may have seen around town, this is one of our, one of our flyers we had. You can see our ridership, total passengers. We've had some pretty good months, 113, and a couple of different months, 91, and I just did a quick hit of the numbers for March, and we're at 94, so we're still.
Wow.
We're still moving a lot of folks, and this graph kind of shows that that number is, is basically on the rise. And most popular pickups, most popular drop-offs, wouldn't you know it, it's Walmart. People go into Walmart from all over the county.
Gotta go.
We're getting them from Union Town, we're getting them from Fulton, we're getting all over the county, and we're bringing them to Walmart, so.
Think how important that is to senior citizens.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's their lifeline.
Yep.
Thank you.
And you see our, the next page is the ridership population. Most of it is just John Q. Public, General Public, under the age of 55, people who need a ride.
Yeah.
We do, we do a fair amount of elderly, and we do a pretty good amount of, of people who have mobility issues. So, people in wheelchairs, people in crutches, people maybe who are just getting out of surgery, who don't move around as, as much as they should. And most of the reasons are either medical or grocery shopping, that kind of stuff. So, as you can see, Fort Scott leads the way, a little bit in Bronson, a little bit in Fulton, Mapleton, that's a biggie. We've got a couple of regular riders out in Mapleton that use us quite a bit, and Union Town is a big one, too. And like I say, most of those people are coming to Pittsburgh. You're not, you're not taking somebody from one end of Union Town to the other. You're taking that person from Union Town to Pittsburgh, and they're, or to Fort Scott.
Yeah.
And they're coming to Fort Scott to spend money.
Sure.
That's, that's what they're doing. We've, we've bought a little over $700 worth of fuel since the program began in Bourbon County, and we have also just started an advertising campaign with KOMB, and that's approximately $500 a month that we're spending to advertise at KMB. Our funding request, it, we do three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. To operate that for a full year is $9,826. When we started the program, we, we received a little over $5,000 from the Healthy Bourbon County Action Team, and then we had several local businesses. And you can see on the flyer, Peerless, Southeast Kansas Mental Health Center, and Community Christian Church, all pitched in to, to help get this program started. And as with the L-Heat money, that paid us, that, that $8,800 paid us up through June 30th. So what we're doing now is looking for a way to keep that program going from July 1st to June 30th of 2025. To maintain the current program is $9,826 total. We'd like to get a little bit of involvement from the county, a little bit of involvement from the city, and a little bit of involvement from some of these folks who sponsored us last year, or possibly look for other funders to kick in. And if we go over that $9,000, we can look at, you know, expanding the days, or even expanding it beyond June 30th of 2025. We're not, that's, that's not a hard number we're looking for. We're, you know, we'll, we'll take anybody who wants to pitch in a little bit of money, we'll, we'll take it, and we'll build it from there, so.
Do you have a target number for us?
$3,000.
$3,000 donation.
Yeah.
The interesting thing is, when we started this program, we were serving two counties, in New Osho and Crawford. We started off on this project as a pilot, with Sheriff Keeman, that, that opportunity arose. From there, it exploded. I mean, went from Labet, then Bourbon, of course, and then we also have Montgomery having conversations with us about starting down there as well, so.
Good deal.
Again, you, you nailed it on, they had the population that were moving, are the seniors as well as the disabled, and, but General Public seems to be a big, a big response as well.
Big one.
And this was the first county that really stood out as far as moving people to work, and having peerless come forward and offer money for that to happen, so, which is something that we're well aware of and willing to engage in and help support, so.
And we, we do have CHC. They also operate a transportation program in Bourbon County. Their transportation program, I don't want to speak for them, but it's mainly geared toward their patients, and, you know, if you're, if you're making a follow-up appointment at CHC that's 30 days away, you can go ahead and make that, that booking for your transportation then. So a lot of times, they'll fill up, and we communicate with them daily about getting, you know, a follow-up appointment for tomorrow, or, or Wednesday, or whatever. So we're, we're in, working with CHC, who also has their transportation program, you know, and we communicate with them all the time, so.
Well, I'd suggest we study it for a week and get it on the agenda again next week, maybe, or?
We don't, we don't necessarily need an answer of yes or no tonight.
Thank you.
We just want to present our, our program and how it's running, and how we're doing, and our hopes for the future.
Jennifer, do you put it on the agenda next week, please?
Okay.
Further discussion, and we'll give some thought, and we'll talk to our finance people, see how we can come up with $3,000. Great service, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
that we're well aware of and willing to engage in and help support, so.
And we, we do have CHC, they also operate a transportation program in Bourbon County. Their transportation program, I don't want to speak for them, but it's mainly geared toward their patients, and, you know, if you're, if you're making a follow-up appointment at CHC that's 30 days away, you can go ahead and make that, that booking for your transportation then. So a lot of times, they'll fill up, and we communicate with them daily about getting, you know, a follow-up appointment for tomorrow, or, or Wednesday, or whatever. So we're, we're in, working with CHC, who also has their transportation program here, and we communicate with them all the time, so.
Well, I suggest we study it for a week and get it on the agenda again next week, maybe, or?
We don't, we don't necessarily need an answer of yes or no tonight, we just
Thank you.
Want to present our, our program and how it's running, and how we're doing, and our hopes for the future.
Jennifer, do you put it on the agenda next week, please? Further discussion, and we'll give some thought, we'll talk to our finance people, see how we can come up with $3,000, they're going to get a great service, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, man.
Thank you. That it? You leaving, or you got one more? You've got Terry here, but.
They want to go really quick.
Terry, you need very much time, you're going to wait till next week.
I don't need, I don't need very much time at all.
Pardon?
I don't need very much time at all. Couple minutes.
Okay, here we go.
I need to ask approval to meet with Rob Harrington to apply for a community grant. Community facility grant application.
I did learn a little more information on that, and I haven't got a chance to talk to you about it. Kansas, that grant doesn't hurtly give any money.
Oh, okay, well.
Missouri gives 90%, Kansas gives like, less than 10.
Oh, wow, okay.
So probably not, unfortunately, probably not worth it.
Moving on, here are call numbers.
Okay.
Run numbers. And there has been question out in the community compared to transfers, transports. The back page is 2023, you guys can just review this, it's broke down. We no longer do transfers because to us, a transfer is interfacility transfer. When we still had our ER here, we would take the patient from here, we would either go to Pittsburgh, Dopplin, Kansas City. Now, everything is a transport for us. So on the front page, you see 2024, we have the 911 to Pitt, Nevada, Gerard, Allen County, 911 to Other. That could be, like, we had to, we took a flight crew, they got grounded here, we picked them up, we had to take them to KU, they had mechanical issues. Or we, well, actually, the 911 to Other would be direct from scene, we couldn't get a helicopter, maybe. And then you should, you can see where we've flown, how many we've flown, standbys, can be fire standbys, rodeo standbys, sheriff calls for us to do a standby for a search warrant.
Okay, very good.
That's what I have.
Good information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for everything you do. Susan, we're going to have to put you on next week, Susan, okay? Make a motion to adjourn?
Do you have a comment or anything?
Oh, no. I'll make a comment, I appreciate Nelson's time with the County Commission, I think he's going to make an excellent sheriff if he should win. It should be quite a race out there, I would think, two, two candidates, maybe more lining up, so I'm going to thank him for the time he served on the County Commission, and good luck to him.
Yeah, I'd appreciate Nelson and good luck to him. I would say that there's a, I don't know if he would want the job, but there's a pretty good replacement sitting in the audience right now. Though that would be you.
Matt, he already works for you.
I don't know who would want the job.
Oh, anyway, I have a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, I, I think you contact the Republican Party, and there's a process, I think, but anyway, I'll second that motion to adjourn, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Clifton.